All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll start with our seven o'clock appointment with Pepper Dining, Inc., doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar. They can request a change, excuse me, manager from Michael Cronin to Travis Lazott. Good evening.
Good morning.
Good, and you?
Very well, sir. Thank you.
Good. How are you this evening?
I'm doing very well. How are you?
Okay. Now, are you Michael Cronin?
No, I'm Travis Lazott.
You're Travis.
Yes.
A fifty-fifty chance.
Fifty-fifty.
Okay, and...
I'm the new general manager of the Chili's in Wilmington, and they're looking to change the name on the licenses from the prior general manager to myself.
Okay. Any recommendations from your departments?
We asked for recommendation from the police chief, and in this case, the department has reviewed the application presented by Pepper Dining, Inc., doing business as Chili's Grill and Bar, on the application to change the manager from Mr. Cronin to Ms. Lazott. The police department, after conducting their review, recommends approval of the request.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
I just have a very brief question. It has no bearing on my vote, which will be in favor, but since you're here, how's business? Things are going well?
Things are going well. It's been picking up.
Good.
Over the last couple of weeks for the holiday, which is very nice to see.
Have you been with the organization in a previous location?
I've been with Chili's for 12 years. I opened the Wilmington location over a year ago when it opened its doors. I was promoted three months after it was opened, moved to Detto Mass, and then got promoted to come back here in September. Happy to be back, so...
Congratulations.
It's been good. Thank you.
Good. Continued success to you, then.
I appreciate it.
No further questions. Thanks.
No further questions. Any other questions, comments, or a motion?
We want to grant the request.
Can I make a request? My name's spelled wrong.
Uh-oh.
Let me make sure we get that on there.
It's just one Z. I don't want it, you know, to come back and bite me.
Okay. We'll... We have it correct, actually, on the licensing authority.
Okay.
L-I-O-T-T-D. So we're all set where it comes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And second, all in favor? Is unanimous? Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, our next scheduled appointment is with Dana Burnham by Wilmington Farmers Market Association, and she's here to give us a report on the first season of the Wilmington Farmers Market. Good evening.
First, I want to say thanks very much for putting us on the agenda. We're happy to be here. And also here is Diane Loane, our clerk, and Kathy Ober, who is new to the Board of Directors for the Farmers Market. She's our Director of Education. So there's two other members that might show up. And also, before I get started, I just want to say thank you for season one. We know it wouldn't have been possible if we didn't have the approval of the board and the location, and so thank you for that. So I dropped off a presentation. I think you all have a copy of it. So I just want to go over our mission statement, go over our organization, do a review of the season, and talk about plans for season two. So our mission statement is one of the first things that we worked on when we first came together. There's five points on it, but you can basically boil it down to two things. One of the main things is bringing in fresh, local, seasonal produce into Wilmington. And then the second thing that is of equal importance to all of us was having a community-based event, something that really sort of embodied the spirit of community in Wilmington. So that's unchanged for us. Our organization is volunteer-run. We're in the process of getting federal nonprofit corporation status that's pending. We have a market manager who's onsite during the market, setting up ahead of time there to make the market run smoothly, and then clean up after the close of market. And all of that is overseen by a five-member Board of Directors. And there's a... We have a change in the Board of Directors. Amanda Muncie was on our Board of Directors. She's actually resigned her position. She is going to be devoting herself to farming and hopes to be vendor, a Farmers Market vendor. So Kathy Ober has stepped up and become Director of Education. Also, Amanda was our market manager. She was a volunteer market manager. So Don Reedy, who is our current clerk, has stepped up and volunteered to manage the market going forward. So to review the 2011 season, typical of Wilmington, it was a community of volunteers. We had various steering committees, education, entertainment, family activities, fundraising. Many people did multiple roles. You know, they might have been on the education committee and helped with fundraising, or pulled in family activities, but also, you know, took photos for us. One of the things that we were really happy to do, as far as volunteers, was we connected with the Wildcat Community Service Project and Diane Garrity. So we actually had high school students earning service hours by helping set up at the beginning of market. They patrolled for trash, helped with cleanup afterwards, setting up canopies, tables, things like that. So I'm not... I can't quite remember how that came to be, but we were really happy to have fallen into that. And then the Board of Directors also... We volunteered in various areas with a weekly newsletter, press releases to the paper, coordinating volunteers, things like that. We also, continuing with our sense of community, we had a market-sponsored community table where we pulled in various community groups during the weeks of the market, and those are listed here. And we actually, we provided the table, the canopy, and usually chairs if there are enough to go around. We all brought our own to have on hand. Then the next slide is the people we had at also the market-sponsored education table. We had Redding Municipalite handing out CFL bulbs for free. The library came one time, and they had books on gardening and food that were... They were actually available for checkout at the market. And they had book lists on gardening and organic eating, things like that. And also, just, I really wanted to point out that Susan McDonald, the children's librarian, came down. She had actually already retired by the time the market was going and had moved to Maine. So she made a special trip to come down. And she had a wonderful table with lots of hands-on toys for kids made out of recycled objects, and she had books. She had a great display on a very windy day, but she did wonderful. A couple of things that we actually ended up having to cancel because of weather. Doctor Sandy Stevens, who's a member of Wilmington Pediatrics, was gonna try and coordinate a bike-to-the-market event, but I'm pretty sure that happened on the day of the hurricane, so that didn't fly. And Amanda was gonna do a raising backyard chickens workshop, but again, that was a slightly rainy day, and I guess it's not great for chickens to be out in the rain, so that was also canceled. Next slide, entertainment and family activities. These were all local, either organizations or performers, businesses. Merrimack Valley Chorus actually was my favorite. That included members of Wilmington, although they're made up of people from surrounding towns. But they did a great acapella performance. So on to vendor responsibilities. Our vendors signed a contract with the market and agreed to market rules ahead of time. They were responsible for meeting the local health and safety requirements, so they coordinated that with Shelley Newhouse, who was wonderful, getting everything squared away. Vendors were responsible for setting up their own booths and cleaning up as they left, and they were required to carry liability insurance as well. We had five farmers. Lindell Farm was actually a beef farm, and Gouet Farm was a farm in North Andover that actually, we didn't start out with. They heard about the market, came and tried it out one week, and then decided to commit to the rest of the season. So then the other non-farm vendors, it's a pretty big variety, fish, honey, nuts, locally-prepared and processed foods, arts and crafts, roughly 30 vendors. Not everyone is on this list. We had a couple of people that came just once. We didn't charge a booth before. They just wanted to try out the market and see how it went. More craft-oriented vendors in that case. There's seven of the vendors on this list were actually from Wilmington, and five were from adjacent towns, so we thought that was a pretty good mark to hit. So our challenges, we definitely had lines for the first hour of the market and then slower traffic later. And we think that might have been partly the number of farmers we had on hand, maybe the market layout. We tinkered with things as the season went on. We rearranged booths. We added a farm. Sun was also an issue for us, since we... The market opened at 12:30, sort of midday sun there, and then we had a hurricane. But we had plans in place for if, you know, weather was dangerous, our vendors knew that we would cancel the market, so we were able to get the word out pretty quickly. As far as the sun, after the first week, we started selling water at the market booth. And with our weekly newsletter, we tried to encourage people to, you know, wear your sunscreen, drink plenty of liquids, wear a hat, bring a cooler with you to the market. And we tried to place booths under trees, so if people were waiting in line, they at least could take advantage of the shade. So I think we improved things, but we can always do better. So successes, we definitely got the word out. I think Wilmington knew that we had a Farmers Market. We had a great location. That came up time and time again. Plenty of parking. The Fourth of July Committee was wonderful in letting us use the sanitary facilities, which was for vendors only. It wasn't open to the public. The vendors had to come to us to get a key and return the key to us. But they also let us use their trash barrels, which was great. I mean, we'd roll them out at the beginning before we set up the market and then put them back in the end to collect trash. And then along with this packet, there are a couple of responses to surveys. We asked customers for feedback on the market, so I've included that. I'm not going to go over it now, but... And we also asked for feedback from the people who were at the community table, and that's also in the packet. And we are in the process of soliciting comments from our vendors. So you don't have that, because we don't have that, so... Another, actually, success that I didn't put on this slide was that during the market, we actually had vendors coming to us asking to be part of the market, people either that we had approached early on that were unsure about committing to a new market, but others that just had heard about Wilmington through other vendors, maybe at, you know, markets that were on different days. And the same thing, they would come once, say, "We'll give it a try," and every single one of them decided to stay for the entire season. There was pistachio nuts, Fior di Italia pasta, fresh pasta, a honey vendor. So 2012 season planning, we've started that. Our goals as a board, as a market, is to really focus more on hands-on educational programs. And a lot of this is very much feedback from people who came to the market. People really would... They wanted things for their kids to do. I think on opening day, we had activities for kids, but not so much as the season went on. So we have some ideas there. Our seafood vendor thought maybe they could do painting seashells, maybe a treasure hunt, things like that. We'd like to involve more Wilmington businesses and organizations. We thought... One of the things that we had hoped to do last season was to have a car seat safety check, coordinate that with the police department, bike safety, something like that. And then there are other organizations in town that, you know, if they could do demos for us, much like Redding Light coming with their light bulbs. There's an organic landscaping company in town, and if they, you know, just ideas that we've been tossing around. So a wider variety of vendors, more family activities, more local entertainment. A serious goal for us is to see if we can get SNAP benefits at the market and also liaise with the food pantry. That was something we tried to do last season, and it just, it never really worked out as far as the timing and making contact, but it's always been a goal, and it continues to be a goal. And then we also need to take a sweep through the market rules that we have and apply whatever we've learned this past season to the current season. And then our last page of goals, we would love to have the same location for a second season that we had for season one. We have a lot of feedback asking for a longer season into the fall for the winter vegetables. We also have requests to open earlier in the day, although if you look at the survey, you'll see that most people are pretty happy with afternoon, so we're thinking maybe 10 to 1 to... But that's just something we're considering and that we'll consider with you. And then we'd like to follow up with town officials that we dealt with this past year. You know, how did we do? Are there things that you think we could do better? Are there changes we would need to make? And then back to a longer season, one thing that having a longer season, I think would, I hope would enable us to do, is we would be able to take advantage of the musical groups at the schools. A lot of people suggested, you know, there's an acapella group, there's jazz band, strings attached, things like that. But since they're not in session over the summer, we had tentative plans to have them our first season, but that just didn't work out with the closing in September. And if you have any questions, I did want to say we're not looking for you to vote on a second season and licensing the spot, but if you wanted to, that would be fine, but we understand that you might have questions for us and want to consider it, so...
A lot of comments, people wanted more farmers.
Yep.
Cut down on the lines and...
Yep, yep. So that's definitely a priority for us.
Good. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'll just say quickly, Mr. Chairman, I was not unable to attend the opening, but I did make it a point to get down there once or twice, and I thought it was exciting. There was a lot of people there. I was kind of moved. It was arts and crafts. They had selling jewelry, local woman in Wilmington was selling jewelry, and I did buy something for my wife. They had some nice pastries down there, and they had a lot of good items. The fish market looked wonderful, and it seemed like a lot of people were excited. And obviously, I worked with my other members on the board to consider maybe expanding the hours or looking at something, you know, as long as it's done right through the town manager's office. I thought everyone had a great time, and I did ask questions, and it was a great time. And I enjoyed it, and I think other people enjoyed it as well.
Thank you.
And I have relatives that live outside of Wilmington that live in Belmont, and I'm mentioning my wife's aunt, and they went down in my house and my wife's aunt, and she was there, and she thought it was one of the better farmer markets. She attends all that, she holds the lectures, etc., so it was nice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of making any changes, I certainly would want to get feedback from town officials who've been more closely involved.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I can't say that I haven't heard any complaints, no negatives, from any residents, neighbors, constituents, or anything else. So it sounds to me as though what you had was successful, and I just want to make sure if we revisit making any changes or look at making any changes, we revisit the whole program with town officials.
Very good. Questions, comments, then?
Certainly, I would echo what Mr. Newhouse just said, just from the town's perspective, but I do want to say sincere congratulations to you and to your organization. I think the fact of bringing something like this from a grassroots effort to formalizing it as a program and actually executing on your plan and your goals and actually bringing it to the community in and of itself is quite a wonderful accomplishment. Certainly, it's not easy. Anytime you bring food and produce and nuts and things of that nature, you need to certainly collaborate with your own people, but also with the town as a whole, and make sure all your certifications and licensing and all of that is in place. And then in conjunction, not only bringing a fresh product, and then, you know, you open...
has. You're very specific about the information that you accumulate and the way that you deliver it. It's not fly-by-night, so it's very impressive. And because of everything that we've just heard, it's clear that the Farmers Market is an asset to our community. It's great to have in the town. It's just, it's the variety. I'm just very proud to say that, you know, Wilmington has this entity, and I thank you for bringing it to our attention. I'm confident that if we work through the logistics of the paperwork and working with the other department heads, that we'll get to a point where we can expand the amount of time that you're there. Frankly, from a personal standpoint, I'd like to see you go into sort of that harvest season with pumpkins and apples, and we... I feel like we missed out on some of that opportunity this year, and I'm pretty confident we'll get you there. So just your patience, as just like last year, we appreciate that, and working with us and the departments. But congratulations and good luck this year. We'll look forward to seeing you down there.
Great, thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks very much.
No, thank you. Communications.
The board has a letter directed to the chairman from Charles Lyons, the Superintendent Director of the Shawshing Valley Technical High School, requesting that the board support the school's application for Community Innovation Challenge Grant of $500,000 from the Commonwealth to provide multi-use opportunities on their current football field. In this case, what he is looking for is to open up the field use both for the school and for youth organizations in the member communities by developing a turf field at Shawshing School. He believes that it would provide cost savings for the maintenance services on the existing field. But moreover, it would obviously be an improvement for their facility, but it would enable them to offer more use of the field itself, both at the school and to the communities. It qualifies because it needs... It's a regional grant program, so it, you know, it has to be something that would benefit a region. There is no guarantee. The most that they can... Anybody can submit for, in this case, on a regional program, is $500,000. And Mr. Lyons is writing to the Boards of Selectment of each community to seek their support. He indicates that there is... It would be fully funded through the grant program and no cost to the towns. So if the board is so inclined...
Do you look up for a letter?
He's looking for a letter, which I can author for the board, but you would need to take a vote.
Due next Tuesday?
Right.
The applications due? Questions, comments, or a motion?
I do have a question. Mr. Kyra, on the last page of our memo, page four, I guess it's under questions, Q and A questions, what is the selection criteria? And criteria for selection will include, but not limited to, innovation, potential for greatest impact, cost savings, and/or tangible benefits such as service enhancements, et cetera, et cetera. Do you foresee, in your administration of the town, do you foresee how we may benefit from this? Could the town of Wilmington... Do you foresee some real potential advantages to a turf grass field at Shawshing Tech for shared use, Wilmington sports teams potentially? I know we're going to have our own turf field, but will that further enhance our...
I think so. The school has allowed the town youth groups to use their fields, and, you know, they've allowed soccer to use the field, youth soccer. They've also allowed youth lacrosse. That was their initial field at youth lacrosse. And as the programs expand, there's certainly nothing wrong with having an additional, you know, field to be able to use. The superintendent is committed to allowing the communities to use that field when the schools are not using it. The town of Billerica, frankly, takes the most advantage of it, but we have as well. And so, yeah, I guess that's a long answer to your question.
To a long question.
But the answer would be yes.
Yeah, no, it seems logical to me, and certainly, Mr. Lyons is a very organized and detailed person, so I certainly would want to... Personally, I'm going to be excited to support him in this endeavor, and I hope it comes out successful.
The only comment I would have is that Mr. Kyra mentioned it'd be at no cost to the town. So the prospect of a benefit and at no cost to the town for an otherwise worthwhile project makes sense to me.
Okay. Motion?
We need a motion to support the project.
I would move that we ask the town manager to craft a letter articulating the Board of Selectmen's support of this project.
Second. Motion made in second, all in favor? Is unanimous.
Your correspondence from Frederick Lasky, the Executive Director of the Mass Water Resources Authority regarding the water supply pipeline and storage tank project. There is a letter that was sent to the four Boards of Selectmen of Redding, Wakefield, Wilmington, and Winchester, as well as the Mayor of Woburn, indicating that the MWRA has been working on a project over the last five years to provide redundancy to the MWRA water supply pipeline and storage tank that serves the communities just mentioned, which make up the northern intermediate high-service area. The proposed solution from the MWRA, which was presented through an ENF, an environmental notification form, back in June of 2010, included a new pipeline that would mostly run through Stonem with portions in Wakefield, Redding, and Woburn. This would form a looped piping system to ensure water service in the event of a major pipe leak or break. I think they're talking similar to what happened in Weston last year. The executive director writes that unfortunately, the town of Stonem's Board of Selectmen have, and I'm quoting him now, "have suddenly taken a position opposing the routing of the proposed three-mile portion of the pipeline through their town, requiring the MWRA now to review and develop alternative routes for the proposed pipeline." We also have a copy here of a letter that was sent from Mr. Lasky to the Board of Selectmen in Stonem, and a letter that was sent to the Board of Directors on December 13th from the town of Stonem, indicating that they felt the project would cause an undue hardship on the citizens of Stonem. There's also, as you read this, there is some dispute about what was promised to Stonem in prior projects and what was promised now, and so there apparently needs to be a meeting of the minds between the MWRA and Stonem. How it affects Wilmington is not really all that much, frankly, because this is a redundant water main for our service area. So it's unfortunate that they... That you don't have a belt and belt and suspenders kind of thing, and you just... We just really have kind of a belt and suspenders. But it is certainly is not critical. If there were a failure of the MWRA's current water main, the town's water system certainly could manage on its own, and then if we needed to ever go into another water system, we already have interconnection agreements in place with Burlington, who does not use the MWRA's water supply. So this is just to let... let the board know that, that if you've read anything about this, the town of Stonem is now barking on what clearly is a redundant water supply, but again, one that could be useful in the event of a major break.
So neither the town of Stonem nor Mr. Lasky are asking for any letter of support or, or otherwise?
No, curiously, they're not. They've indicated that they're going to now review various alternatives and come back and let folks know what those alternatives might be. But they, they were not asking for any letters of support. The board has a memorandum from State Senator Tarr regarding the Senate Bill 2085, which is an act relative to improving accountability and oversight of educational collaboratives. You will recall that this was an issue in the newspapers for some time regarding educational collaboratives' independence in terms of how they operated. And this bill addresses the potential for improprieties within that segment of the educational population. And he outlines certain highlights of the, of the bill, which include submissions of annual reports to the various communities, requiring boards of education to prepare financial statements and conduct independent audits. They established, want to establish a special commission to study the role of education collaboratives, prohibiting members of the Board of Education collaborators from receiving a salary. You will recall that was one of the major problems where former superintendents were receiving salaries. And requiring DESE, the Education Department, to annually furnish a supplemental report on its assessment system performance relative to the services, to, to the various students. The board has a letter from the Irving Board of Selectmen regarding legislation relative to congressional district apportionment of presidential electors. The town of Irving Board of Selectmen has written to all the communities, and they write that, "As you know, the U.S. Constitution gives each state legislature the right to decide how to appoint its own electors for presidential elections. We are contacting you in the hopes that you share our opinion that all Massachusetts voters would be provided a stronger voice in presidential elections if our current electoral college vote system, which is a winner-take-all system, were replaced with a system of congressional district apportionment of presidential electors." So they're asking you if you would be in favor of that kind of a change. The proposed legislation would have one presidential elector be chosen from each congressional district and two chosen at large. They say this is a similar system that's been used in Maine and Nebraska, and ask if you would consider supporting the change in legislation. So do I have any direction from the board?
Thank you.
I need a little more time to figure that one out.
I chewed on it a little bit. Surprise. Correct me if I'm wrong. In 2010, did not Massachusetts move to, and I think the governor signed it, where Massachusetts full, I think we have what, 11 electoral votes get cast depending on the outcome of the popular vote? That was a legislative bill that was put through, and I believe it was passed in the legislature and vote, and signed by the governor. So currently, and it's related to this a little bit, currently, our votes as individuals and as districts, et cetera, go in, and they're counted right up until the time that the popular vote calculation comes up. And if, regardless of how Massachusetts voted, what the popular U.S. vote is, is the way that Massachusetts electoral votes get cast, which, when I was doing some research on this, kind of defied logic to me. I guess I took my eye off the ball when that was taking place in 2010. So if someone wants to correct me on this, maybe I have my facts wrong, but that's what I believe is the case. What this bill seems to be saying is, let's undo that and have our 11 available electoral votes be deviable, make up my own words, depending on how the various districts vote. Personally, I'm not at all in favor of that. I believe we have a system that works. Frankly, I'd be much more inclined to see someone come up with some legislation that brings us back to what we had prior to the 2010 changeover and let Massachusetts electoral votes go the way Massachusetts wants them to go. So personally, I would move, and frankly, I'd like to make the motion that we take no action on this. I don't think we need to necessarily write a letter of opposition, but I would like to make a, take a, a position of taking no action.
No objection to, to formalizing a vote of taking no action.
Motion made second, all in favor?
unanimous. Board has correspondents from Mark Ward, the manager of Eastern Service Center for the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, giving us an update regarding the Boston Logan Airport noise study. Again, this is a rather lengthy piece of correspondence regarding their committee work with the past two years. They've been working to complete a screening analysis on proposed noise abatement measures relative to the various communities. Wilmington is really in a, very much in an outlined area here, and they are, but we are included among the communities that they look at in the area map. I can tell you that this is a, a long process. They continue to look at the various results of the noise modeling. And they note that at this point, the FAA is not conducting a formal environmental impact statement or environmental assessment at this time, but that that kind of an analysis would occur during a later phase of this particular study after the community advisory committee makes a recommendation. Obviously, this is of critical importance to communities like Winthrop and Chelsea and Boston and Everett and Revere. But because we're in that circular area, we also get this information, as the board is aware.
Pretty big area, isn't it?
It is.
A lot of planes.
We have correspondents from Jane Lyman of Comcast Xfinity regarding price adjustments. The first part of the correspondence speaks to the commitments that they have to their customers in providing the best in on-demand TV shows, internet speeds, et cetera, et cetera. But when you get right down to the nub of it, it says, "While we continue to make these investments, we periodically need to adjust prices due to increases in programming and other business costs. And starting January 22nd, new prices will apply to certain video services, equipment, and other charges," as indicated in a notice that is going out to all of the communities. So they are increasing various prices of basic services being increased, for example, from 1156 to 1247. And there are other programs in here in terms of their digital services that are also being increased, and as well as some of the various pay-per-view and demand programs. Any customer of Xfinity, of Comcast Xfinity will get this information. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider approving the acquisition from the First Baptist Church of Wilmington of the 10,299 square feet of land per the vote of Article II of the December 10th, 2011 special town meeting. The board has received that authorization, as you know, from the, from the town meeting, and I would recommend that they sign the documents. This is a, you know, somewhat of a critical piece to the high school project. Included in the documents, in addition to the quitclaim deed, is also a First Amendment purchase and, a First Amendment to the purchase and sale agreement, because the church is still gathering up some information. And we're just extending the time by 30 days, although I fully expect we'll be able to, I can execute the agreement on, on your behalf if you sign the closing documents, likely be done by this week.
Excellent. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve the acquisition of the First Baptist Church of Wilmington and the description that's set forth in the deed that's been provided.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Just to be clear...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, just to be clear, it, the price is $15,000 as appropriate at town meeting. I don't want anybody to think we're...
Right, yeah. I was just going to comment too, and motion was on the table, and simple enough just to keep moving. But I just think that this is a great example of how the town has worked well with different segments of our population. In this case, it just happens to be the First Baptist Church that has had a very positive relationship with the town for many years and mutually beneficial. And this really is a, I don't want to overstate it, but it's a significant piece, certainly of the high school project that was made, you know, project is simpler and better for having this, and not a lot of money in the big picture. So thanks to the church and their cooperation and, and just acknowledging the town over the years, you know, having that mutually beneficial relationship.
Very good.
Any other comments?
Already said.
Okay.
We had a motion made second, all in favor, right?
We got it.
Good answer.
We did that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to ask for discretion.
That's all.
Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider signing a contingent purchase and sale agreement with Century Bank and Trust Company for the acquisition of approximately 20.3 acres of land located at Nine Cross Street in Wilmington that has commonly been referred to as Yentile's Farm, and is located on Assessas Map 39, parcel five. As the board is well aware, they have been discussing this project for quite some time, certainly initially through executive session, as is appropriate. The proposal would be for the town to purchase the property for $1,182,500, and to appropriate that sum of money from available funds through free cash at the upcoming town meeting. Century Bank has agreed to that price. I can tell you that the property, as you know, was sold back in, I think around 2003 or thereabouts by the Yentile family for, I would suggest about three times that amount. And recently, the bank has tried to sell that property. The town has always had an interest. The town had an interest back when the Yentile farm first sold. In fact, the board offered over $2.1 million for the property at that time, but that didn't even come close to what the eventual purchase price was. Things didn't go the way the, the buyer had hoped, and the developed, the property was never developed. It has been marketed now for several years, foreclosed upon by Century Bank, and they have been looking for people to buy it at a much higher price. The selectmen have, in my judgment, negotiated a, a pretty good deal. The field, the property, certainly how it would be used would be up to the, up to the town, the board of selectmen, but we've always looked at this as an opportunity to increase our inventory of recreational open space. And I, I think this would be a, a great thing for the, for the town. It is a contingent sale, so it would require the town meeting to authorize the, the purchase and vote. And I would, if the board is interested in going further on this, prepare a warrant article for town, for town meeting in order to acquire the property. We also have to go through the 30B public procurement process in, in cases like this, which the town will do. Mr. Howell is already working on that project with council. And I'm prepared to answer any questions, but the board is, is well aware of this. They've been at the forefront of the negotiations, so I'll leave it to, to you, Mr. Chairman, and the members of the board to discuss further.
Yeah, I think this is a great thing for the town. A lot of work, been going into this, a lot of negotiations. And to echo what you said, I think the field space is going to be very helpful in town here. It's going to add to the, the field space that we have in town here. And kudos to you, town manager, and Jeff, for all the work that you guys have done. And this board negotiating in the, in the processes up to this, and I think it's a great thing for the town. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say quickly, I agree with the town manager. I served on the board for a while. We were very interested in that property in the early 2000s, but even back then, the board wasn't foolish enough to spend that kind of money. But now, years later, millions of dollars less, lo and behold, has fallen in the lap of the town of Wilmington. And I think it would be to the advantage of this community to expand its ball fields and to purchase this property. I do support it. And what a wonderful time to buy this property at this price. People are very aware of it. If you go down Cross Street, it's those abandoned foundations. People aren't too aware of it. 20 acres out there, I think about 10 or 11, Mike, that's actually doable. And it's a great piece of property, and I fully support it. And I think it's going to work wonders for this community. And we're going to look at all the options and the use, expanding ball fields, I would assume, and anything that we deem that would be beneficial for the town. And we'll move it in that right direction, because there was a need for ball fields. And I think we've done a good job over the last 10 to 20 years, expanding fields, working at the Woodfield School behind there, expanding Palmer Park right here behind the town hall. And the town's done a great job through the town manager's office, and this board has, I think, done an outstanding job. We, we were in executive session many times, looking at it. And I think this is a great thing for the town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Mike.
Agreed. With everything that's been said, I would, I would add to that in saying that I think that the town has been well-served over the course of the last decade, two decades, and even before that. I think that the town has been very proactive in trying to add to its open space and recreational field space. It's not an easy thing to do. Wilmington is, one of the things we're not blessed with is a lot of municipal land. We're not blessed with a lot of state land that's located here that we're able to, you know, work out a deal over the course of time. I think the town has maximized on opportunities that have been out there. From the Wildwood Street property back in the 90s, which has proved to be instrumental in the new school project. I look at Sawmill Brook, which was done back in about 2002, a piece up on Ballad Vale next to the town forest. For that matter, the town forest, which I had nothing to do with, but I think it's, it speaks to the fact that the town of Wilmington consistently is opportunistic in trying to acquire space that can be used not only for open space, but for active recreational space. And we recognize the need. We're trying to, we consistently try to be proactive in adding to that inventory and serving the needs, especially of the, of the young kids in town, but not at prices that don't make sense. So I think this is, to me, subjectively, I'm more excited about this possibility than any of the other ones that I've mentioned and been associated with. I just think this is a, just great timing. The town's positioned to do it. You know, I wouldn't imagine we're going to have to borrow to do it. So, you know, I, I think that the town has put itself in a position, I mean, the selectmen, the town administration, and town meeting, and the members who have voted consistently over the course of the last couple decades have positioned us to be able to do this. And this is real, it's a great opportunity. Very, very pleased about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments down there?
I think everyone has done a great job, you know, conveying all the positive points and articulating those points for the residents. I'm in full support of this. I think it's an excellent opportunity. I think from a business standpoint, the price is right. The need is here. And I believe the fact that we're able to do it without any sort of tax burden for the residents at this time is a real key component. at this time is a real key component. And certainly, it just echoes the town's commitment to the community, to recreation, and to specifically our youth. So, I certainly look forward to the future, the future dynamics of this and how it plays out at town meeting.
Yeah, it speaks directly to quality of life for the residents in the community, as far as I'm concerned. I don't think there's any, anyone here that can, that isn't aware of our deficiency of usable field space in town. We do a very good job of maintaining the fields we have, given the stress that's put on them every season. And so, I'm excited about the prospect going forward of hopefully being able to purpose that, that real estate for some recreational fields for all to enjoy around the town. So, it's very good news. It's clearly a win for all of the great reasons that you all just explained. And frankly, because of its location, as you said, Mr. Newhouse, some of the other locations you referred to are kind of off in other stretches of the community. But this is just, it's like a bullseye in the middle of our town and frankly, it's just such an eyesore. And I'm really very excited that we're finally going to see something happen with that property in a positive manner and really beautify the town as well as be something that's functional and usable for all people. So, congratulations to us all. Thank you, Mike, for taking the lead on the communications on there. I'd also like to compliment the folks at Century Bank for working with us through this whole process and Jeff. So, congratulations and look forward to working with the residents on finding ways to creatively use the new property.
Well said. With that, we need a motion.
Yeah, right, okay.
To sign a contingent purchase and sale.
I'd make a motion that the Wilmington Board of Selectmen sign a contingent purchase and sale agreement with Century Bank and Trust Company for the acquisition of approximately twenty point three acres of land located at Nine Cross Street in Wilmington, commonly referred to as Yentau's Farm, to assess a map thirty-nine parcel five.
Second.
Motion made a second, all in favor? unanimous? Outstanding.
At the state of the game, do we need to give Mr. Kyra instructions to include that on the warrant, or would that come at a future date?
You know, that's probably a good thing at this point. I'm glad you mentioned that, so...
Just don't want to, you know, forget it and God forbid, you know, we take our eye off the ball and we miss the date.
That would be part of your responsibilities in terms of the agreement. Our responsibility is to get it on the warrant, so I think that's a good idea.
So, I would like to make the motion that the Board of Selectmen instruct the town manager to include this discussion for vote at the next town meeting.
Motion made a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to approve the submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for an application to fund replacement windows at the North Intermediate School to address energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs. This is a project that we're looking to fund, similar to the improvements that we made at the Shawshine School. You're all familiar certainly with the new windows and doors that have really made a remarkable, remarkable improvement at the Shawshine School, both in terms of energy efficiency, aesthetics, and the like. Part of our plans are to try to gradually do similar projects at the other schools. And the next school that we had selected to do that would be at the North Intermediate School. And that was going, and that is going forward in the budget that we will present at the end of the month. This is an opportunity to, again, get a fifty percent coupon on the, on this particular project, similar to what we were able to get on the Shawshine project. And it requires that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the submission of this statement of interest. Doing so would result in us paying approximately four hundred thousand dollars as opposed to eight hundred thousand dollars for the project. And we're not guaranteed approval. However, there is money available in the MSBA for this purpose, and I would recommend that the board consider authorizing us to go forward and authorize the superintendent of schools to submit that statement of interest.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move that the board adopt the following resolution. Mike, do you need this entire form of the vote to be read into the record?
I think that we do, so if you don't mind...
Okay, so I move that the board adopt the following resolution. Resolved, having convened an open meeting on January nine, two thousand and twelve, the Board of Selectmen of Wilmington, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated January nine, two thousand and twelve, for the North Intermediate School located at three twenty Salem Street in Wilmington, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which Wilmington may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority five, replacement of windows at the North Intermediate School to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related energy costs. Existing windows are not energy-efficient, leading to significant heat loss. Windows are not weather-tight, leading to leaks during wind-driven rain events. The thermal panel windows will reduce heating costs and will eliminate window leaks. And hereby, further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Wilmington School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second. Motion made a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board. Thank you.
Public comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Couple of meetings ago, when you took on public comments, Mr. McDonald, who's in the audience here tonight, brought some information to the board's attention. At that time, I tried to respond to it and Mr. McDonald got hysterical and left the room, so I think I should be able to continue with that response.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. McDonald, you had presented a bunch of information relative to real estate taxes and listed a number of individuals. I can't remember who they all were, but certainly you had identified myself. So, I think it's important for people to understand how that process works. So, first of all, Vision Appraisals is the company that does the appraisals for the town of Wilmington. I have to believe they're the single biggest appraisal company in terms of doing municipal appraisals in all of New England, if not the Northeast. To think that these representatives of Vision Appraisals even know who I am or know who anybody else on this board is, is really quite a stretch. It would be, it would be quite a conspiracy to think that somehow we have some participation in that process. Interestingly enough, after that last meeting, I also talked to Mr. Moynihan when you had talked to him about getting an abatement. He indicated that, you know, property taxpayers are eligible for abatements. When I talked to him about that after the meeting, he also indicated that at a point in time, you had come to talk to him about that very piece that you wanted to discuss, a piece of vacant land that apparently you either own or you're the trustee of a trust that owns. And he indicated that he had told you, Mike, come out, we'll take a look, you can start the abatement process, and you weren't interested in that. You didn't want to have anybody at the property. So, I would, again, encourage you, if there's some misunderstanding there, if you think that you have an assessment that's out of line, that process is available to you as it is to everybody. Lastly, you know, in terms of, you know, how these things are assessed, you seem to take issue with the fact that your particular lot had been assessed for less than any number of properties that other people owned. And I'd just point out to you that I'm sure there's a difference as a, as a rule of thumb with unimproved land and improved land. I've not gone through all the assessors' records for every record in town, nor would I bother, but I think you're talking apples and oranges when you're talking about unimproved building lots and improved building lots. So, appreciate the opportunity to respond to that.
Thank you. With that, is there any public comments? Mr. McDonald?
I was actually gonna make some other comments, but since Mr. Newhouse brought that up, I think I need to address that. Personally, if we're paying an assessor close to a six-figure salary and he's not on top of the assessing in town, knowing that there have been other people in town, I believe it was Avco that sued the town because they were being overtaxed, okay? The question I have is, how many other people are gonna come forward and sue the town? It sounds like you got a lot of money in the bank, okay? Like nine million, nine and a half million dollars. Now, there's a, there's a reason that that money gets into the bank, Mr. Newhouse. I personally feel that it's overtaxation and overcharging people for fees. With regard to the unimproved lots versus improved lots, okay? In my judgment, when a person has an improved lot with veterans, a house on it, issues that impact the town with taxation versus a vacant lot that relatively has zero impact on the school system or anything else for that matter, and then I go through people on the high school building committee, relatives of politicians, and I see that there is a drastic difference in the land valuation on an improved property from a vacant lot property, and then to hear you tonight try to question me and my judgment on that, I'm astounded at you to even bring that up. If I were you, you would be looking at all the properties in town. And if Vision can't handle it, then I'd suggest you get a company that can handle it, because I believe that people are gonna start suing the town. I'm aware of one guy right now that has been suing the town for quite some time and has racked up, I'm sure, probably close to a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees that the town has paid up and continues to be jerked around by the town, Mr. Newhouse. So, personally, I take offense to your comments. I would expect my elected representatives to be on top of things like assessment. And quite frankly, I'm concerned when you shift the tax rate to industrial properties and commercial properties, that these people are gonna be coming back and suing the town, because they actually have a lot more money than the individual residents of the town. So, you might want to rethink your position on that, Mr. Newhouse. Take a look at some of the vacant lots and take a look at your own lot. I believe Mr. Kyra has a family member that is, I believe it's his brother, his land value is probably thirty thousand dollars less than a smaller lot than this. So, that list, I went over it thoroughly, I checked it twice, and I'm pretty confident that the town records reflect what I brought forth to the board.
Yeah, I just, there's a mouthful there, the whole bunch of things that need to be responded to. Let me, let me go in reverse order. Let me start with the last comment you made. Again, for the last ten years, but particularly the last year, you've spent an incredible amount of time in public forums, going after individuals, trying to embarrass them, making, you know, baseless allegations. You've accused this board of being corrupt, you've accused this board... You're doing it again tonight through your innuendo, you mentioned the Kyra family name. Now, first of all, my job as a selectman is not to review every assessment record in the town of Wilmington. It's not even the principal assessor's job. Like every single municipality in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we don't pay people to go to each and every household to do the assessments. That's something that we farm out to a vendor that, I tried to make the point, is probably the most widely recognized, capable, and competent appraisal company that does municipal appraisals. Not only am I not inclined to go look at the seventy-five-hundred-odd households and however many other unimproved property tax bills there might be, because A, it's not my job to do, and B, you know, I have no interest in trying to embarrass anybody. But the fact of the matter is, if you're a conspiracy theorist and you think that the Kyra family, the O'Connell family, any one of us up here has some interest, I would encourage you to take a closer look, just a little bit closer to home, okay? The property that you were talking about, as I understand it, is one Treasure Hill Road. The house that you live in is literally right beside it at, what, one forty Indover Street, okay? The house that you live in, which has an acre more than the lot that you are complaining about, that house that you live in is only valued for two thousand dollars more than the half acre that you're complaining about. So, I understand that's not your property, but if there's a conspiracy going on here, then your mom is involved in it. If there's a conspiracy theory, the gentleman who... See, every time, every time somebody wants to talk about you, you need to talk over people, you need to disrespect people. Now, nobody has the freedom to speak except for you. At that last meeting, when you walked out, the gentleman sitting behind you shook your hand as if to say, "Good job, Kevin." Well, he's sitting on an acre and a half. He's assessed for less than you. So, the same gentleman who shook your hand on the way out is in the same conspiracy that apparently half the town is involved in. So, you know, when it comes to these conspiracy theories, you know, first of all, don't just present a couple of facts here or there, throw them up in the air, and expect that people are supposed to sit back and take it, you know? It's ridiculous, the amount of time you spend trying to embarrass people and the things that you say have no basis in fact, zero. So, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna complain about people's tax bills, look a little bit closer to home. With respect to the commercial taxpayers in town, you're right that, I think you said Avco, but tax drawn, there was indeed a couple of tax abatement cases through the year. Those tax abatement cases cost the town zero to defend. And they're not litigation over the tax rate that this Board of Selectmen sets each and every year. Each and every year maximizes the extent to which the law will allow us to impose a tax burden on the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax base and therefore minimize to the, to the extent possible under the law, the tax burden on the residential taxpayers. That's not what's litigated. What's litigated is the value of their, their real estate and their commercial property. And as you indicated, these companies, some of them have a lot of money. And I dare say that if the town undertaxed them, those would hear about conspiracy theories on that, too. So, you know, I don't know what lawsuit you're talking about. I know that the town has been engaged every year, has some tax abatements. Usually, they get worked out informally. Some of them end up before the appellate tax board. To this day, to suggest that the town of Wilmington has spent a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees dealing with any tax abatement is just categorically and outrageously untrue. We pay our council a fixed rate of money regardless of whether or not they defend that tax, appellate tax board case or any other. So, please, don't throw out numbers like a hundred thousand dollars if it's a fact. It's made up out of whole cloth and it's simply untrue.
Well, let me just respond to that. Number one, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, I'm a realist, and I don't try to embarrass people, but Mr. Newhouse, you do a good job at embarrassing yourself. And quite frankly, when you're telling and putting misinformation out, your four-point-oh committee was passing out flyers that was saying the high school is overcrowded, so we need to knock it down and build a new high school. And then we find out that the classroom size is only about fourteen students per classroom. And now, we're gonna pay over eighty million dollars for a new school because you and your board were putting out lies, okay? So, you sit there like a big shot, all right, thinking you're a know-it-all, all right? And quite frankly, the tax appellate court happens to have Mr. Moynihan attending, not Vision Appraisal, okay? So, if Mr. Moynihan is not in charge of looking at property values, why is he going to the tax appellate board?
Because he's the representative...
Quite frankly, he's got a job to do, and I don't think he's doing it very well, Mr. Newhouse. You understand that? And I'm not gonna argue with you...
Yeah, I understand what your opinion is.
Because, quite frankly, you don't encourage me and you don't have my confidence in your position as a selectman. You understand that?
Yeah.
Good.
That's, that's, that's fine. Let me, let me, that's, that's good.
I can get to talk about some other...
That's good. That's good. Well, but you know what? You can't pick and choose what you wanna talk about, and then you don't get your way and just not talk about it anymore. So I'm gonna respond to what you said. Again, to say that the Wilmington High School 4.0 Committee, to say that any proponent, and I know there are a lot of them, I know this town was overwhelmingly in favor of that project, okay? To say that any one of them that was a vocal advocate said that we need a new school because it's overcrowded, you either weren't listening for the last year and a half or you just made it up. Because from day one, everybody has said, "We need a new high school to meet the programmatic needs of the Wilmington High School." So you can go back...
I have a handout from your 4.0 Committee, which personally I think it should've been a 0.4 Committee, that says that the school is overcrowded, Mr. Newhouse. So if I have something in writing from ya, okay, that I'm going by, I'm not making it up, Mr. Newhouse, all right? And when you get caught in a lie, all right, then you try to dance your way out of it, all right? You're not gonna dance your way out of this one, Mr. Newhouse.
Yeah, I know, you got me, you got me. Let's, you know what, let's start...
I know I got you, Mr. Newhouse, but I didn't come here to get ya, honey. I didn't come here because you embarrassed yourself. I came here to ask a question about the Yentile Farmers.
All right, so let me, let me ask you something.
But I'm actually not asking you the question, I'm gonna ask the big-time, big-shot chairman there, if you can handle it.
Let me, let me, let me...
Can you handle that question, Mr. Semagian?
That's such a con...
Mr. Newhouse is still talking, Mr. McDonald.
Let me ask you this, Mr. McDonald, seriously.
I really don't have any...
It's 2012.
I really don't want to talk to you, Mr. Newhouse.
No, I know, we're supposed to sit here and listen to your nonsense for a year on end, but you don't wanna hear any questions.
You don't wanna let, you don't wanna let the press know that you've been passing out publications that were, quite frankly, lies, all right?
I'll produce every publication I had my fingerprints on with pleasure, proudly. Now, let me ask you this.
And then when I ask, which department to bring down the oil sample, he can't handle that, Mr. Newhouse.
That's what it is with the cops.
The oil's cleaned up, the oil's cleaned up, all right?
I know why you got it in for the fire department, I know why you got it in for the planning department, I can't figure out why you have it in for the cops, or frankly, why you have it in for us, other than supporting a new high school.
When somebody retrieves oil, a contamination product, all right?
But let me ask you this, it's 2012...
And a police chief can't handle bringing an oil sample to an $80 million meeting, Mr. Newhouse, maybe it's time to get a new chief. But then again, I don't think you can even handle it.
Let me ask you this.
You don't have to ask me anything else, all right?
No, but I'm gonna ask you, you don't have to answer it.
I don't have any more answers for you, Mr. Newhouse.
You don't have to answer it, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. It's 2012.
Quite frankly, you are disturbing to the town.
It's 2012, this is our first meeting of the year.
You did one thing right, thank you.
Yeah, I got more than one thing. But let me ask you this, let me ask you this. Let's try and start the year off positive, all right?
I'll start it off positive with a negative person making a mistake.
I'm just, I'm just asking you, can you think of anything, anything, that any person sitting up here, either collectively or individually, can you say anything good about the job we do? Can you come up with one thing?
Yeah, that someday you're gonna be probably voted out of office.
No, seriously, is it, do we do anything right? I mean, the town's not doing bad. Is there anything? Just, can you come up with anything that we do?
Have you lowered taxes, Mr. Newhouse? Have you lowered taxes?
He asked if you could come up with anything good.
Anything good.
I can come up with a positive thing, that's...
No, I'm, and here's why I ask that question, here's why I ask that question. You can sit here and you can call me all the names you want and talk about how terrible I am, and that's fine, you know, I have thicker skin than to worry about that. But I think it speaks to...
Do you really, it's like you're getting your feelings hurt, like maybe you need a Band-Aid, maybe a Band-Aid, Mr. Newhouse?
Listen, I'm just, I think it speaks volumes. When somebody comes in, if they have a legitimate gripe, a legitimate point that they wanna make, you know, that they make it, they wanna challenge this board, they wanna challenge the town manager, that's fine. We do that all the time. And we treat people, we treat people with respect, we treat them the same respect that they treat us. I think it speaks volumes when a guy who is as involved in the town as you have been can look at six people in a town that I think is doing pretty darn well, and you can't come up with one...
Because of robotaxing people?
And you can't come up with one good thing? I think that, I think that says quite a bit.
Is there any other public comments?
Yeah, I'd like the question about the Yentile Farm. Was the property foreclosed on? It was never foreclosed from franchise or anything like that?
The...
Did the developer keep...
It was foreclosed by the, by the bank.
Pardon me?
The bank foreclosed on it.
Okay, and so now you're trying to buy it off the bank? Because it was my understanding that when property gets foreclosed, it has to go to auction.
It did go to auction.
It did go to auction.
Went to auction, and there were, the bank bought it back.
The bank bought it back, okay. And with regard to the use, the future use of the site, are we limited on what we're gonna use that for?
It's gonna be up to the town to make that determination.
No, I heard people talking about fields, and I heard Mr. Newhouse saying it's probably gonna involve borrowing.
No.
I said won't bar bar.
Won't involve bar.
Won't bar bar. Is that because we have the nine and a half million dollars in the bank?
It's because we have the $1,182,500 available to purchase it through free cash.
And I just wanted to ask you, how does a town, being a nonprofit organization, get to have over $9 million in the bank?
Good financial management, I would say.
Good financial management?
Right.
Oh, so it's not from taxes? How do you actually get more money than you need?
We have not, we have not used the proposition two and a half override for new taxes, despite your comments about fees. The town probably has one of the best records in Massachusetts with regard to the lack of imposition of fees. I think we get to this position because we budget carefully, because we underestimate and lower our estimates on revenue sources, and a lot of those sources are not from the taxpayer. So I think we're doing pretty well in the eyes of those folks who look at us, like the Department of Revenue, bond rating agencies, and the public, frankly, as evidenced by a 1,426 to 31 vote and a 75 to 25 percent vote. But I think that's pretty, we might see evidence that we need, and I forgot...
I was reading the actual report from Standard &amp; Poor's, and, you know, I continually hear you mention that the town has double-A rating.
Double-A plus, actually.
Double-A, okay. So I'm also aware that Standard &amp; Poor's rated Lehman Brothers just days before they went bankrupt, double-A, and I believe before AIG had to get bailed out, they were also rated double-A. But in their report to the town, it said that the town has, with regard to pensions, an unfunded liability of, I think it was $103 million, and the town is only contributing 31 percent of its responsibility, which is less than a third of its responsibility.
I think they were talking about the Middlesex Retirement Commission, which is, well, the Middlesex, the town is one of a number of communities that belong to the Middlesex Retirement System. And there is a system in place right now, and you'd be welcome to talk to Pamela McKenzie, the treasurer collective who represents us there, or go to a Middlesex Retirement Board meeting and talk to Mike Morris. But essentially, they do have a plan in place for all of the communities. I think the governor signed legislation on that that takes the funding schedule to 2035. But, you know, the fact that Standard &amp; Poor's rates somebody else one thing in the town of Wilmington something else has no bearing on the town of Wilmington's rate unless, of course, I suspect that you're casting innuendos about Standard &amp; Poor's as being perhaps not legitimized. I'm not sure what you mean by all that.
No, when I, when I read their report, and I read that the town had an unfunded responsibility of that great amount, and that the town was only contributing less than one-third of its responsibilities...
Yeah, I don't think that's what you read.
The last paragraph in that report, Mr., the global report...
I don't, I don't think that that's all that you read. I think what you read...
Do you actually have a comment?
I think what you, I think what you read was that the financial management of the town continued to be strong, that we had a low debt ratio, and that in general, it reached a level of financial stability that would enable them to give us a double-A plus. Certainly, nobody bats a thou, well, you probably bet a thousand, Mr. McDonald, but nobody bats a thousand that I'm familiar with. But I think we're doing, we're doing pretty well.
Well, I'll tell you what, once you come to the last, the last paragraph...
Is there any other, Mr. McDonald? No, no, Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald. We're done, you've done 20 minutes, we're good.
Are you short?
Yeah, we'll see you next meeting. Any other public comments? I'm positive, Mr. McDonald.
Okay.
Positive.
Mr. Rambo.
Yes, Mr. Ligafelt.
Rambo?
Rambo, you called him Rambo.
Called him.
Big shot, Rambo.
I am a little resistive. I actually had a comment that I was gonna ask or question last week, but I opted not to because of some of the things that were discussed in the news. But specifically to answer a few questions that came up today, though, I'd like to have some comment questions and comments, maybe two or three things, but I'll be quick. It'll be a couple minutes, and I'm not making any personal attacks, I don't think, mostly, but maybe a little bit.
A little bit, huh?
Well, yeah. The positive thing I would like to say came to my mind right away, which I really appreciated last summer, when Mr. Shampoo brought the question, when I pointed out that the town charter was being violated, with a person that was serving in violation of town charter on two boards. And I got the impression, had he not asked the question, that it would've just been whitewashed through. That's just, that was my positive comment that came right to my mind. I appreciated that. Thank you very much.
There's one.
Yeah, there's one.
It involves me?
But it was, it was in response to the facts, and this is a fact, that the town charter was being violated. So that wasn't just an innuendo, that actually was occurring. The question I do have for the, to fall back to, for the overwhelming vote on the high school, which the town manager just brought up tonight, I agree, it was an overwhelming vote, and it probably would've still carried, but I don't share all of Mr. McDonald's opinions and theories. Some of them have some merit, but not, well, I don't wanna go that way. But the 4.0 Committee did issue a flyer on Friday, the weekend before, the election was on Tuesday, the town meeting was on Saturday. And if you look at the wording in that 4.0 Committee publication that went out to the town's children in school, it was nothing legally, I don't think, incorrect, but it was very misleading. And I've talked to a few people in town, and there were a lot of people at that meeting, the town meeting, that voted based on having received that flyer on Friday. So I commend the people that were a little bit slippery in my mind, how that was worded and sent out. They were voting on the fact that had they not voted for the high school, that it was a done deal, the creation was lost. And that blue flyer on Friday and before put 'em over the top. There were a lot of people I heard of, so that's, you know, it probably wouldn't persuade enough people, but it certainly helped. But the big thing I wanted to ask last week, that I didn't, was at the town meeting, only two people were allowed to speak in opposition, I think three people spoke in favor of the project. And it was an $84 million project, $81 million was for the loan. And then it was, the question was moved by a member of the Board of Appeals, who's also an attorney, and then right away, it was like rubber stamp through, and everybody, everybody was in there for blood, pretty much. It really stirred up. I'm not saying that the position for the project was incorrect, it's a valid position. I didn't happen to agree with all the details. I was favor of a new high school, it's not that option. And there were some facts that I would like to have brought out, and I just really was preoccupied and didn't. But I have a question to the board. Do you think as a board, it was appropriate that only total of five people, two specifically in opposition, spoke for an $81 million project that we couldn't, as a town, have had a 15 or 20-minute, you know, conversation and had? There were four or five others of us, like myself specifically. I didn't wanna get up and accuse people of incorrect things. I actually had facts as an environmental scientist that I wanted to bring up. And my opposition to the environmental problems of the high school isn't that I'm afraid that everyone's gonna die and all these other horrible things we've heard about. I know an awful lot, probably more than anybody else in this room, I know a lot about what's happening at that. My concern was that if we are gonna hit the high school down, I wanna make sure that the MCP regulations are followed. And I can tell you about that quite a bit. And I made comments about those environmental regulations at the meeting that the committee had, and there was an LSP present for the architectural firm, and I didn't hear him make any comments in opposition to what I had to say. And I made, I wrote a letter to the editor a few weeks ago, and I outlined a few of those positions. And they were scientifically based on licensing requirements and DEP policies and facts that I have. And I don't share all these other opinions, wild accusations and everything, but I actually had facts and figures and things to point out. And as a board, are you proud of the fact that we only shut, for $81 million, $84 million total project, that that thing was almost orchestrated to be shut down, slammed? Two people got to speak. And I don't think either one of those people had, you know, here's your friend which you have, you're having a mental war with, and then there was another lady that spoke about the Marlin or something. So there were three or four of us in the audience, myself among them, actually had DEP policies, guidance documents with specifics, you know, paragraphs, pages.
Well, can I just, can I just answer your question on that? I think the town moderator did a wonderful job doing, doing what, Mr. McDonald, why do you always have to be rude and disrespectful?
He just made a comment that made me laugh, I'm sorry.
I think the town moderator did a great job. We have open town meeting, it's open town meeting. He did a great job, even spoke with town council about the two, the individuals that spoke for and against. And if there was that big of an issue that people really wanted to speak, that they would've voted not to move the question. But I believe it was overwhelmingly voted to move the question.
That's because of a lot of...
I don't wanna say it's because of somebody who's orchestrated, you keep using these words like we orchestrated something. That's open town meeting, that's how it works, Mr. Ligafelt.
I understand that.
So I feel, yeah, I feel proud of the way it worked because it's open town meeting, and you could've very easily had three-quarters of the crowd say, "No, we don't wanna move the question, we still wanna talk about it." But I think 99.9 percent of the crowd said, "Yeah, we wanna move the question, we've got it, we know we wanna vote for." And I believe open town meeting worked that day. And I think Jimmy Stewart, as the town moderator, did a great job.
Do you think non-voters should be in the auditorium instead of...
I said you were finished tonight, Mr. McDonald, I said you were finished tonight.
I'm just saying, do you think that non-voters should be in the gym rather than down the auditorium?
No, I, I think you touched on it all. I would just reiterate that at an open town meeting, moderator directs the discussion in the assembly and makes rulings on order, but as with every single motion, that motion to reconsider was voted on by the assembly. Yeah, as an assembly, they were ready to move on, you know?
I threw that out there to reemphasize it, that there was two people's vote, and it was $81 million, and I just didn't think that was appropriate. But I didn't get up and jump up and turn blue at the meeting, you might notice that I was there, so...
Do you think the moderator did a...
Any other, new business committee reports? New business committee reports, we're done. New business committee reports done yet?
All set.
All set. The business committee reports.
Go to that end of the table, I have something for the...
Are you all set?
Well, sure, what the heck, I'll go. I just wanted to say Happy New Year to everybody, and I do mean everybody. I also wanted to take just a brief second, I don't wanna run a campaign from this pulpit here, but I just wanna tell everyone that you, my colleagues, I did pull nomination papers for reelection. It is my turn this spring, so residents can expect to see me out there working to earn this seat again, and I hope that I will be able to do that. But I'm looking forward, hopefully, working with you in the coming years. That is all, thank you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Just wanted to extend a Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to a great 2012, and that is it.
Sure. I wanted to wait because I was thinking about the meetings, and I think that you did a fine job the past year in terms of managing the meetings, but we're kidding ourselves if we don't think that we had a couple tough ones along the way. And I just wanted to start off 2012 with a, you know, a sense of humor and hopefully we'll...
I appreciate that.
Hopefully we'll, we'll have a very productive year throughout the year. So I, I've got some presents here for the, for the board for the upcoming year. And this one I got from Mr. Shampoo, might wanna wear it during public comments or any other portion of the, portion of the meeting. But if you can, if you can't read it from where you are, it says, "Shut the front door." So, good luck in 2012, Mr. Shampoo.
Wear it with pride, thank you, sir.
I got this one for Ms. O'Connell. I don't know if you can read it where you are, but it says, "You don't have to agree with me, but I'm still right." So I thought that might come in handy for you this year.
Thank you.
I like yours better.
I didn't wanna leave the manager out of this, so I got one for you, too, Mike. I don't know if you can read it from where you are, but it says, "Yes, despite the look on my face, you're still talking." So you're pretty good with that body language.
You're pretty good with that body language. I thought that was appropriate for you.
Thank you.
Bev, I didn't want to leave you out either. I got one for you. On your mark, get set, go away. You never treat people that way, but I figure you might want to send a subtle message.
Once in a while?
This one, oh, half a bubble off. That's not for anybody here. Mr. McCoy. Life is a circus. I'm stuck in the freak tent.
Good luck to you this year. All right. Thank you for coming.
No, no, wait, hold on. You too, Mr. Chairman. Don't be a donkey in so, in so many words.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All righty. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you sure? You sure that one, no, okay. All right. Important dates.
Sure. We continue to collect Christmas trees at curbside, and we'll do so through the end of this week, January 13th. Town offices are closed on Monday, January 16th in recognition of Martin Luther King Day. The board next meets on January 30th. So, that will be the board's next meeting, which will include the fiscal year 2013 budget presentation. The last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on the warrant for the annual town meeting is May 5th, 2012. And that is our, for the May, the meeting of May 5th, the last day is February 3rd. Just to make that clear, February 3rd is the last day to submit petition warrant articles for the annual town meeting. And one, one piece of good news is that we just learned that the, a young man at the middle school by the name of Robert Sica, S-I-C-A, has been selected as the first-place winner of the MMA sixth-grade essay contest. And these are thousands of kids that have submitted that. And I'm sure the board will have him in at some time in the future with his, with his family. We don't have the official word yet, but Mrs. Benton contacted me. How big is the family has been contacted. His sixth-grade English teacher is Jean McGonigal. And so, we congratulate Ms. McGonigal and the principal, Ms. McMenamin, and all of the staff, and especially Robert, for his, for his first-place finish. He'll get a $500 savings bond, as well as a, a trip to the MMA conference, where they'll host him at a banquet and host his family overnight. So, a pretty nice, nice honor for the town.
He gets to read that essay in front of the entire assembly at the MMA, too, right? Does that help you do that? I think they do, yeah. It's a big deal. I'm anxious to see the text of the essay. It must be pretty, be pretty good.
Mr. Shampoo and Mr. Semaglia will, will be there to join him at the table.
Motion to adjourn. Second, all favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Have a good night.